July 23rd, 2024 council meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mrs. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map? Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present, so if you will, please stand with me for the prayer and the pledge. I most heavenly and gracious father, we thank you on tonight. We thank you for all that our eyes have seen and our ears have heard. Right now, Lord God, I want to stop for a moment and just pray that you continue to unify our country, to unify us as a people, that we realize that we live in these great United States of America and that we as people, you have put us here to do your divine work and your divine order. So as we move forward tonight on this dais, let us continue to remember that we must do the will and the work of you and that we must put all of our people before our thoughts and our minds to make sure that we're running this community as this community would like to see it done. It is these and many more blessings we ask, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. At this time, we're going to get ready to go into our public comments. And tonight, we do have Coach James Lonsford and the We Care basketball team and staff members. So Coach Lonsford, if you will, please come up and join us at the podium and...
Thank you, now, yes, yes, the basketball team, you know, a bunch of young guys that we had, young guys and girls. You know, first of all, I want to thank you guys. We had a great program this year and we really could not have had it without you guys. Especially Ms. Shinholster with the whip, she gave us some guidance and she was good, so we really appreciate that.
You think that whip came on too?
Yeah, yeah, she came, she did a good job for us. You know, tonight I have, I want, you know, we don't have them all, but we have, on good days, we had about sixty. So we go, y'all stand, just have them stand up a minute. These are some of the campers who were there and some of the staff members, staff members. And, and they really worked hard. We had a lot of them that came and worked and, you know, we just want to thank them. You know, it's, I think it's, it's so important, I think, is, you know, these are sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and they don't drive, so when you say calm, they have to bring their parents too, so sometimes parents can't get them, but we really appreciate these kids for making it. Quickly, the only thing I want to say is that, first thing, is that maybe about four years ago, Mr. Hall, stand there, Mr. Hall, stand there, I ain't gonna let you, all right. Mr. Hall and I started going around to mentoring programs, you know, we went around, there's a lot of great mentoring programs around here, but they don't seem to have a lot of kids. So we were just trying to figure a way we could help the community. And what we've done, it's a program and we do basketball, they like basketball, we never get them in the gym, we went for basketball, but part of our, our program is, we meet, we met seven times this year, we had it one day, Ms. Shinholster demanded one more day, so we had one day and it got seven days, and we, in the seven, we go four hours. And those four hours, the first forty minutes, you know, they're not always happy with it, but they have to sit and listen. We bring in somebody to talk about standing away from gangs, we bring in somebody to talk about just being a better student, we bring in somebody to talk to them, this year we had, we had, the city came in and they talked to them. Massey, Massey's there every year, he comes over every year, so, but we just do, you know, maybe when you do get in a fight, maybe here's something things you can do instead of getting involved. Their program is We Care and we just add it Stop Dividends. We feel like if we care and get you ready, you will stop dividends. So the only thing we were trying to do was just, we've done this now, this is the second year. The county, we're going to go to the county too, they provided the gym for us and we were using the gym. Like I said, the program is four hours and we start and we, after we do go through, and if you've got children, you know, you've got to do something they like to get them to do what you want. So what we've done is basketball, we have the girls and the guys together and it's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Doesn't make it a difference what school you're from, John Millers, GMC, Baldwin. We had kids from everywhere, we're going to have, this year we had, on a good day, sixty. And next year, we're hoping to have more, hopefully next year, y'all will continue to support this program and we can go from there. I know you've got more important things to do for me to stand here and talk about that all night, but if you had any questions, I'd like to answer them. I know, I told Ms. Shinholster, I worked for Nike twenty-five years and I did a lot of talking and one of the things they used to say when you're talking to the general public, everybody don't know about sports. So what you got to do, you got to explain what you're talking about. So a lot of times, we talk about things that, in this program, and it's just basically ended up being a basketball program, but, you know, they have to go through listening. We brought in outstanding, what, Mr. Davis out, he came over and talked to them about occupations. Next year, we're going to get other people to come in. So we're just trying to use that because we feel like the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is a time, if we're going to save them, that's the time to save them, so, and they've done a good job.
How many days a week do you?
Twice a week.
Twice a week?
Twice a week, Tuesdays, Thursdays.
Through the summer, right?
Tuesdays and Thursdays, we come in, we, you know, we've done pretty well. We have a lot of grandparents, you know, we don't have much problem with them, our grandparents come with them. So grandparents tighten them up a little bit, they keep them going. But this, this outstanding group we had, we appreciate, you know, I think the mayor's been involved some, Ms. Map, Ms. Map has been involved some, we appreciate her. Ms. Shinholster came and really helped us out this year. So hopefully that we answered some questions and, any of y'all want to say anything? We just got a bunch of the guys who brought kids and decided that we needed some help, so they got involved in working with us, so we're involved in that, so, but anyway.
You got a question?
With the indulgence of city council and Madam Mayor, we would get a picture of you guys.
Yeah, be grateful, yeah, yeah, one of the guys.
Come out and gather round.
Do you want us to come out and just go there?
I didn't know you all were doing this.
Oh, yeah, he spent all day with me, we went to every facility in the city. He got here at nine o'clock, him and Regina left about three thirty.
Mr. Ned, come and swing around if you will, that's good, that's perfect.
Actually, I may, I may have to get you just a little.
All right, everybody's ready, that's okay, all ready? Very good. See you once more, okay? Good, thank y'all very much, congratulations.
All right.
I need to take that with you.
I bet you were worn out after that.
I told Sid, I said, you wouldn't think running around all day long, I tell you infrastructure where you at, but I did, I got home and I saw that I felt sick.
Oh, he, you know, we kind of cut from the same cloth.
All right. Mayor, if I, if I could make just one comment associated with that. One of the, one of our community businesses in town, the last day that they were meeting Chick-fil-A, donated almost six hundred dollars worth of meals for them at the end of their last day. So I want to thank Kirk Floinoy and his staff for taking care of that quickly and for nothing as far as cost was concerned to the city, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, to, to, I really appreciate it. Chick-fil-A, somebody from Chick-fil-A came to the day of Washington and said, you know, I don't know how, you should be able to use Chick-fil-A. The city, they involved real food, that's, after every session, maybe Chick-fil-A. And somebody came here, this is going to get us.
Pizza.
Pizza.
And, and I just want to mention that, Coach Lonsford, you didn't mention it, but Sheriff Massey said that it was, it was programs like this and grabbing the kids in that age group would really be a big help to the community because like I tell you all the time, and I know that Ms. Map and Dr. Lee can attest to that. We lose so many kids in middle school because they're at that age where they're insecure, their physical bodies are changing and they're, they're so not sure about themselves and then, then they're at home and with their parents, they're dealing with the fact that they're too old to be babies, but they're too young to be teenagers. And so they really, they really are lost and they feel lost, a lot of them feel lost. So if someone comes along with something that they think that, that they can entice them with, they're easily enticed, they're easily, they can easily get attached to social media and things that they should not do. So when you have programs like this and our plans for the program, and I say our, even though I'm not, you know, I'm not the organization, but the plans, the plans are to, you know, basically kind of make sure that we keep in touch with the kids that were there all year and encourage more kids to come next year so that we can, these kids in that age group can know that there are people who care about them and care what's going on with them and care about how they conduct their everyday lives. So I, you know, I'm just really excited about it. I was happy to get up there and serve pizza and do whatever else I could, the times that I was able to go. And it was great seeing all of those kids there and having a good time. Thank you, Coach Lonsford.
All right, you all have received a copy of the July ninth, twenty twenty-four council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
The motion carries and the minutes are adopted. Tonight, I really don't have any opening comments for you all. Glad you had a successful basketball count, Coach Lonsford. I did walk through one day, it was exercise for me because I got out the house, but it was good to see the kids out. You've always been a part of my life for is basketball because I was his statistician for how many years? So, yeah, sure, so, yeah, so I appreciate you still to this day. We have two presentations on the agenda tonight. The first one is from David Irwin, a partner in Malden and Jenkins, who will give us the report on the annual physical, financial, and compliance audit for the first year that ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. When you arrived this evening, a copy of the city comprehensive financial report for the same physical year was at your seat. So at this time, Mr. Irwin will present his presentation to Mayor and Council.
Well, I tell you, that's a hard presentation to follow. Sounds like a pretty impressive program y'all had there and the community should certainly be proud. I was happy to be a part of that, get to watch that. Anyway, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Irwin and I'm with Malden Jenkins. I am the partner who oversaw the twenty-three audit of the city's financial statements and certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here to discuss with you all the results of this year's audit. Yeah, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent auditors report, talk about the results of the compliance report that we issued in conjunction with the audit, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, discuss some information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all and then obviously to answer any questions that you all may have. Now, the financial statements themselves that have been presented to you all are the responsibility of management and members of council. As your independent external auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. We conduct our audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards and I'm happy to say that we're issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Again, this is what you want, this is the highest level of assurance we can provide your external auditor. What this means is that in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting, generally accepted accounting principles. Again, as part of the audit, there is a compliance report that we issue called the Yellow Book Report. The Yellow Book Report is located in the back of your financial statements. It's a report on the city's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And I'm happy to say that we do not have any audit findings reported to you all this year, meaning we noted no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the city's internal controls during our audit. And, you know, as I've mentioned you all before, with all the new accounting standards that are being implemented each year and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, it makes it all the more impressive to be able to present you all an audit that not only has a clean opinion, but no audit findings. So that's certainly a representation of the hard work done by your staff. I do want to thank Shay and her staff for all their hard work. They were very accommodating, our audit team, they worked hard to get, to address all of our questions and to get us everything that we needed in order to get the audit finalized. So again, just want to, want to thank them for their hard work again this year, it's very much appreciated. Just, just to note, sometimes we issue a compliance report called a single audit report. Again, a single audit is a compliance audit that is required when an entity has over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures. You all did not meet that threshold in FY twenty-three, so therefore, we did not have a, a single audit for you all this year. Now, for a brief overview of your financial statements, again, you all prepare what is called an annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as an act for. An act for requires the inclusion of additional information that goes above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. This document is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officers Association, otherwise known as GFOA, where they put it through a pretty stringent review process. Not only their professional staff, but they also have a special review committee that looks at your report. And when they look at the city's act for, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the city. What they want to do is make sure that the necessary information is in your report so the readers of your financial statements can do something else. And through this review, the GFOA once again awarded you all the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And I do believe this is the thirty-seventh year in a row that the city has received the certificate. And, you know, one further thought on that, we, our firm audits over seven hundred governments throughout the southeast. Of those seven hundred governments, around a hundred and seventy-five received the certificate, but very few can, can say that they've received the certificate for thirty-five plus years. So again, congratulations to you all on that. This is a very impressive document, it's certainly something, certainly something you all should be proud of and again, it's just another example of you going above and beyond the, the basic financial reporting requirements. So again, hats off to you all on that. As you look through the financial statements, one section I always like to point out is the management's discussion analysis, otherwise known as the M D N A. This section begins on page five, it's right after our audit opinion. I always strongly encourage everyone to read the M D N A. The purpose of the M D N A is really to make it easier for the readers of your financial statements to better understand this report. And it does this by providing a narrative explanation of the financial statements from management's perspective. So, you know, if you have any, if you have any question about any fluctuations or anything unique or unusual that occurred during the year, oftentimes, you can find your answer throughout the M D N A. In addition, there's quite a bit of comparative information in this section. There's financial activity for not only FY twenty-three, but also FY twenty-two in this section as well. To me, that adds a lot of value to the reader. It gives you kind of a much better understanding of the current year activity when you have those prior year numbers there for comparative purposes. So again, I can certainly understand you all not wanting to read the entire hundred and sixty-page financial statements cover to cover, but I would strongly encourage you all to read the M D N A. Now, the city's basic financial statements, they're broken up into three components, the first of which is your government-wide statements. The government-wide statements, they provide a broad view of the city's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in private sector business. All, all the funds of the city are combined into one or two columns depending on the nature of the fund. You have a, a section for your governmental activities and you have a separate section for your business-type activities. But as you can see on this slide, we summarize the, the financial activity for the city from the government-wide perspective, but again, as you can see, city ended the year with assets and deferred outflows of resources around ninety-one point one million. That's around a three and a half million dollar increase compared to the previous year. Of that amount, approximately forty-four point eight million are your capital assets. Again, capital assets, that's your land, your buildings, your machinery, equipment, et cetera, that's owned by the city. The city had just approximately twenty point six million dollars in liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, which resulted in an ending net position of approximately seventy and a half million dollars, seventy point five million dollars for the year. Looking at your revenues, they're around twenty-six point one million. Expenses are around twenty-five point nine, which resulted in an increase in your net position of approximately two hundred thousand dollars for the year. So, you know, all in all, a relatively flat year for the city from a, from a government-wide perspective, but, you know, you, you all continue to be in really good shape financially. So again, that's certainly something that you all should be commended for. The second component of your financial statements are the fund-level statements. Again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. The fund-level statements, they, they focus on individual parts of the government and, and report the city's operations in more detail than that of the entity-wide. And, you know, of all the funds of the city, if I'm in your shoes, my primary focus is on the general fund. Again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the city and therefore accounts for the majority of your revenues received and funds expended. But we have a couple of slides here, the first of which breaks down your, your total revenues for the year for the general fund. Again, total revenues were around thirteen point four million, that's around a two hundred thousand dollar increase compared to the previous year. You know, obviously, the majority of the general fund's revenues are derived from taxes, which total around twelve million dollars, so it, it accounted for approximately ninety percent of the general fund's total revenues. Just to break that down a bit further, property taxes were a little over four million dollars. Sales taxes were around three point eight and then other taxes were right at four point one for the year. Other taxes, that includes such taxes as franchise taxes and insurance premium taxes. This next chart shows the general fund expenditures the year by function. Total expenditures were around thirteen point eight million, that's around a one point two million dollar increase compared to FY twenty-two. You know, as you would expect, public safety, public works, and general government represent the majority of these expenditures. Public safety was around eight point two million dollars and it accounted for approximately sixty percent of the general fund's total expenditures. So, and that percentage, that's, that's within the range of what we see with, with other governments of your size. Public works expenditures were around two point three million and general government expenditures were around one point eight million for the year, both of which were around two hundred thousand dollars higher than FY twenty-two. In total, the general fund's fund balance, it slightly decreased this year by around three hundred eighty-four thousand for an ending balance of four point eight million for the year. This chart on this next slide, you know, it shows the fund balance history of the general fund over the past five years. You know, as I've mentioned you all before, these charts are kind of always interesting to reflect back on where you were compared to where things currently stand. And, you know, as you can see, even though you all had a slight dip in your fund balance this year, overall, you've done a really good job of increasing your fund balance over the past three years. You know, twenty twenty was obviously a, a unique year, an outlier due to COVID. But, you know, with everything that's gone on over the past five years and the economic uncertainty that's followed it, again, it makes it all the more impressive to see that you all have consistently been able to stay within budget and increase your fund balance. So that's something that the council, management, and really everybody involved with the city should be, should be proud of and commended for. So again, congratulations to you all on that. And one quick thing about fund balance, one thing I always like to mention, you know, fund balance is not what you all have in the form of cash for discretionary spending. Fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is available in cash. One more thing to keep in mind as well, as it pertains to your general fund, the general fund encourages expenditures of approximately one point two million dollars per month. So you all ended your fiscal year, June thirtieth, with an unassigned fund balance equal to approximately four months' worth of operating expenditures, which is good. It's, it's good, especially with your year-end being a June thirtieth, to have that cushion, to have that fund balance to get you through the, the months of July through November when revenues are lower than they are at other times of the year before you get your property tax revenue in. So again, that, that fund balance is a strong fund balance, but it's, it's very much needed to, to get you into that next fiscal year. A couple of other funds I just want to briefly mention are your three enterprise funds, which again are your water sewer, your solid waste, and your stormwater fund. Enterprise funds are used to account for operations in a manner similar to that of a private sector business. The goal of these funds is to be self-sufficient and to generate sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. So this chart shows the operating revenues and operating expenses of these funds. Water, water fund had an operating income of around seven hundred sixty-four thousand. The solid waste fund was essentially flat, as it's been for the past couple of years. The stormwater fund had a slight operating loss this year of a hundred fifty-eight thousand. You know, nothing necessary to be concerned about, these funds are in good shape financially overall. You know, of the three, I would suggest you to kind of keep an eye on the stormwater fund and just to ensure that... fund and just to ensure that, that these operating losses, you know, don't continue into the future, which would again, would certainly affect your overall net position. But again, all in all, all three of those funds are, are in good shape financially. One final item to discuss to you all is just certain information that again, the auditing standards requires that we communicate with the city receiving a clean opinion, no audit findings. The information on this slide is essentially formality, but we received full cooperation from management staff. There were no disagreements with management, there were no significant issues discussed with the management that would have affected the financial statements. There were no uncorrected misstatements. And again, we are independent of the city as required by governmental audit standards. And with that, unless somebody has any questions, that concludes my presentation. You know, as you look through your report, there's obviously a lot of information in there. What I've tried to do is just hit the highlights, what I think is the most important to you all, but if there's any questions you all may have, I'll be happy to address those at this time. But to, to close, I do want to thank your staff again for all their hard work. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and look forward to working in the future.
I would like for those people who work in the department, please stand. That's right, I got you.
We thank you Shay because we know you've been through a lot and thank you for your hard work and dedication to the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right, so our second presentation tonight was supposed to be, excuse me, our second presentation tonight was to be a proposal from Lawson Lawrence to partner with the city of Millisville to submit a Department of Community Affairs Equity Fund Rural Workforce Housing Initiative Grant Application. Mr. Lawrence contacted the city earlier today and asked if he could reschedule due to illness. We talked with Mr. Lawrence to reschedule his presentation, so he will be moved to a later time for the city manager. At this time, Mr., did you want to say anything towards that?
Ma'am.
Did you want to say anything towards that particular issue? Okay, so at this time I'll go ahead and, and turn things over to the city manager.
Um, she's actually already left, but I, I also wanted to add my thanks to Shay. Shay, Shay says that she feels like she has two things going on in her life, budget and audit, budget and audit, budget and audit. Because as, as soon as we finish one, and I'm gonna say "we" because she sometimes has to sit on my head to get information, but as soon as we finish one, we start the other. But she, she does run a tight ship. I, I put 100% confidence in stock in, in what Shay tells me and what she and I discuss. And she has continued to be a trooper throughout her illness. And I did want to say to David, he's actually gone now, but Malden Jenkins is, is, you know, back in the, back in the old days, when auditors came in, they were there about a week, sometimes two weeks, and you had to care of the books and they, they actually come in, I think they ended up coming in for a total of about a day and a half throughout the audit process. Everything else is done electronically and so we appreciate Malden Jenkins working with us and, and working with Shay like they do. Finance department is in good hands and I say that with all the confidence that there can be. I won't take but just a minute to mention two things that are coming before you tonight. First of all is you have eight resolutions for stormwater drainage easements. These easements are necessary for the stormwater work that will be part of the contract with Peach State Construction. You all passed a resolution in February to award that contract to Peach State and now Simonton Engineering, our engineering firm for the project, is working on getting the easements necessary. These are easements that will come before you because they will be easements that remain with the infrastructure. We have some other easements that are construction easements only in nature and those we will not bring before y'all because they are not permanent easements. These are permanent easements, they will be associated with stormwater infrastructure that are part of them, so therefore they come before y'all. Paul is here tonight. Paul, do you want to add anything to that in terms of the purpose of these easements or anything like that?
The purpose of the easements are to, you know, try to eliminate some of the drainage problems in the neighborhood and get to do that, we have to be able to cross the properties and get back and forth. And so these easements, I think there's eight of them that we've been working with the administration.
Thank you. There's actually been nine of them signed so far, the other one is a temporary construction easement, but there'll be more coming. So there's, there's a fair number of easements that have to happen. If you all remember, that's $2 million worth of stormwater infrastructure repair. So when you're spending that kind of money, you've got a lot of properties to go across. But I think everybody has been amenable to signing the easements. They're, they're so happy to get the water moving, they're willing to sign the easements to get that done. So we appreciate the citizens who, who have stepped up to the plate to do that for us. The only other thing that I'll mention is you all have a resolution to authorize a software service agreement with Tyler Technologies. You all may not recognize the name Tyler Technologies, but they are the parent company for ENCODE. As you all know, ENCODE is the heartbeat of the city of Millisville in terms of, of a major IT piece. You all tasked me with improving IT services in, in my most recent job performance evaluation, and that's what we are doing. This is last meeting, you all approved the Windstream contract and we locked those prices in for three years, so we're improving and locking prices in at the same time. With Tyler Technology, we're doing the same thing. This new software service agreement will enable us to have a web-based product from Tyler as well as store that data on the cloud. And as soon as you all approve this resolution tonight, we will get started on the migration of that data from in-house servers to cloud servers. That's going to be extremely important in months to come as we look at doing some other things associated with our IT services for the city of Millisville. And I look forward to, to continuing to bring things to you all to, to improve those services. Interestingly enough, we will be using some ARPA funds to do this new software service agreement with Tyler because as part of the negotiation for that, they have agreed to lock prices in for two years. And we will be using ARPA funds to do that because one of the things that will be very easy to do is document for the feds at the end of 2026, the importance of a cloud-based system for ENCODE so that if another pandemic comes along, we can sit at the house and work and never miss a lick. We kind of did that this last time, but, but it wasn't at the house, some of us had to be up here working. Shay did have a VPN to get into ENCODE, I had a VPN to get into ENCODE, but this will make it even easier when that time comes. So I'm excited that we were able to, to tie that down for two years and that we're able to fund it with those ARPA funds that, we don't have many of them left in terms of allocating them. They all have to be allocated by the end of the year and that's going to happen and they have to be expended by the end of 2026. And so you all know your city manager well enough to know that that ain't going to be a problem. So I'm excited about having the opportunity to get those upgrades with, with Tyler. Mayor, I will, the only other thing I will mention is I mentioned to you all in my bi-weekly report, we will have a called council work session and pension committee meeting on August the 2nd at noon. And the purpose of that meeting will be for representatives from GMA's Employee Benefits Program to come do presentations for us on their defined benefit and defined compensation products as we look to make those changes with the city. And Melvin and I will be getting up an agenda out on that before the, the end of the week, but that will be a meeting at noon. So that was one of the things that we've been talking about as far as our work plan is concerned, so that has that moving forward at this point in time. So with that, may I take any questions that anybody has?
Questions?
August 7th.
August 7th, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. There's no old business to come before council this evening, so we'll move to new business. As mentioned by the city manager in his report, coming before you this evening are eight resolutions of easements necessary for the stormwater utility improvements, which will be completed based on the contract with Peach State Construction and authorized by your approval of Resolution R-2402-09, which was passed during the February 13th, 2024 council meeting. The wording on all of the resolutions is the same except for the location of the easement and the owner's name, but we will need to vote on each one of them individually. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2407-29 by caption.
Actually, Mayor, Mr. Jordan just informed me that if we read them individually, we could vote on them en masse, so.
Okay.
There's no objection to that.
I don't think there's no objections to that.
Well, Mr. Reynolds has been looking at me for about 10 minutes.
I was gonna ask you too, but.
I knew what was on his mind.
Because I turned around and looked at Mr. Jordan and said, "Can we?"
This is what I was asking about this morning, I didn't want no surprise. And I get one anyway, okay. All right, so that being the case, we'll read them individually, but we'll vote on them en masse. Okay. Clerk, if you will, please read Resolution R-2407-29.
A resolution to authorize a stormwater drainage easement across portions of property owned by Jody Alfred and Abigail Alfred located at 3620 Longacre Road.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
No.
Oh, you're gonna do all of them, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Resolution R-2407-30, I'm sorry.
A resolution to authorize a stormwater drainage easement across portions of property owned by Arnita Wilson located at 2311 Woodview Circle.
And the next resolution is Resolution R-2407-31.
A resolution to authorize a stormwater drainage easement across portions of property owned by Jayla Waller located at 2301 Woodview Circle.
The next one will be Resolution -2407-32.
A resolution to authorize a stormwater drainage easement across portions of property owned by Patricia Hogan located at 980 Dunlap Road.
And the next one will be Resolution R-2407-33.
A resolution to authorize a stormwater drainage easement across portions of property owned by Annie Kate Choice located at 2317 Leo Court.
The next one, please, R-2407-34.
A resolution to authorize a stormwater drainage easement across portions of property owned by Patricia Hightower located at 2257 Leo Court.
The last one is Resolution R-2407-36. 35, I'm sorry, 35.
35. A resolution to authorize a stormwater drainage easement across portions of property owned by Albert Williams located at 2308 Leo Court.
And finally, Resolution R-2407-36.
A resolution to authorize a stormwater drainage easement across portions of property owned by Jaquez West located at 2267 Leo Court.
You have heard the resolutions in a mass, are there any questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we approve each of the proposed resolutions en masse.
Second. If the proper motion is second, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
All right, with that being said, all of the resolutions are passed. That concludes all eight of the resolutions for easements that have been on the agenda this evening. More will be coming, which will be brought before you as the owners sign them. Resolution R-2407-37 is a resolution authorizing a software service agreement with Tyler Technologies LLC. That was already approved in the previous resolutions. So we don't need to go back over that one, have we done any?
37.
Did you not approve 37?
37, we haven't approved it.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go back to that one then. I'll ask the clerk to read R-2407-37 for the software service agreement.
A resolution to authorize a software service agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated.
All right, you have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Don't move.
Are there any questions? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
With that, the resolution is approved. All right, we have one new alcohol license application to consider tonight. I'll ask the clerk to present the license for 138 North Wayne Street LLC.
This is an alcohol license for 138 North Wayne Street LLC, Deepak Kumar, and this is for beer license, wine license, Sunday sales license, alcohol beverage catering license.
You all have heard the application, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
License is approved. We do need to go into closed session tonight to discuss a personnel matter. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move. Second.
All right, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
So at this time, we'll be moving into closed session and when we convene, when we convene, we'll return back into open session. Return back to open session from the closed session, no action taken, so I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
All right, so we're officially back into open session yesterday. This concludes the items on the agenda, does anyone on council have any questions or comments?
I want to make one comment if I could, and I wanted to make it earlier, but it's about Coach Lunsford, and I, I was sitting here thinking, I, I don't know hardly anybody that I can think of off the top of my head that has had an influence over people in this community over, well over half a century.
We've mentioned him.
Yeah, you know, he, he just keeps on churning and somehow I just look at him and hope I can do that same thing at some point in time, just keep on churning.
And it's not just athletes, I was a band nerd and he had an impact on my life, so.
Oh yeah, it didn't matter, it didn't matter what you did or where you were or, you know, he, he always asked me about Teresa and, and Teresa and Denise both were cheerleaders and they didn't have anything to do other than jumping up and down mostly. Just assume, see them move right the way.
We were captain and co-captain, so you cannot.
Yeah, Teresa's gonna get angry about that.
I was gonna say, cause you cannot say we didn't have anything else to do. We, we coached, coached Lunsford through, when we started working with him, he was girls' basketball coach.
Yeah.
And during our time as cheerleaders, he moved over to boys' basketball and he won championships. And he won championships as girls' basketball coach, and then he turned over to boys and did the same thing. So he has been around us a long time and has done great work with a lot of kids.
I actually was his aide and his statistician for five years, he said too, but I was five years with him. And Donald Hartree and all that crew before them, I had to get hit on the head. I had an assistant, my girl wasn't my assistant, but anyway. Any other comments or concerns? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, a properly motion and second, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.